Jim, and thank you all for attending tonight, as well as those of you who attended our two meetings of the Bike Path Ad Hoc Committee. The goal of this committee was to produce a recommendation on how the bike path should proceed. This has been a twenty-ish year-long affair at this point, and now a recommendation has been made. So at this point, I would ask one of our ad hoc members, Dr. Frederick, to come forward, just to report out what occurred at our October 22 meeting.
Good evening, everybody. The pleasure to be here. Hi.
Mr. Frederick.
Thank you. Once again, it's a pleasure to be here, proceeding through some of the work with you. And I am attempting to report strictly on what was discussed at the ad hoc committee as a member of the committee, rather than my own personal bias as to where I think that we should go. So at some point in time, we will discuss that later. The ad hoc committee consists of six appointed voting members, complemented by two town council members, Donna DeNell, Ryan Verde, and the town manager, and Tom Plante. A thank you to the town council for allowing me to be a member of this, so it's both persons of this committee, and it's greatly appreciated. And we do appreciate the leadership that you two have provided in this process and keep us really on track. The committee consists of six people. I think we did a nice job. We have a lot of points to deal with. We just put this great eye, but nonetheless, we came to some conclusion at the end. Second act of the ad hoc committee met on October 22nd was charged making a recommendation to the town council. At the onset of the meeting, it was strictly noted that several groups under consideration were not represented on the ad hoc committee. Residents were not on the committee. Specifically mentioned were there against the avenue residents and Kingston Road residents, which is a concern for the ad hoc committee. So in general, Congress, each member was bashed about their viewpoint, steadfast in their opinion, but listen if you would order the court to vote. Minutes were taken and shared with the town council, supplementing the formal survey report already provided to the council by a committee member. As these minutes are shared with you, please note that it was difficult for me to take notes and participate in the discussion at the same time. Nonetheless, these are the words that I captured from the committee. Evaluation issued to the group.
Rupert?
Yeah.
Dan, could you pull the PowerPoint, please?
So we had a Rupert sent in.
But Donna, just so you know, you don't have to sit here and give him the report. You don't have to rush because...
Okay. All right. My word of advice. Thanks, Dan. Well, time's not going to stop. Okay.
Yes, please. Can I hear back here?
So minutes were taken and shared with the town council, supplementing the surveys already submitted by a town council committee member. As these minutes are shared with you, please note that it was difficult to take notes and be participating at the same time. Criteria, we started off with ten criteria, which were submitted to the ad hoc committee at the same time, and we wrote each one with the basic tenets of that, and we arrived at twelve different themes for the evaluation of each group. The first group we thought about was Prospect Avenue. And we have about four or five different groups, so we'll go through each one of those now. So Prospect Avenue was a route that one member pushed forward, and we submitted a plan to each one of the members, so they could look at it ahead of time. The next aspect was discussed. A route going through Prospect Avenue from Kingston, the existing link path behind High School, leading to the bridge down the side of Tom Hall to Kingston Road, by way of Fifth Avenue, as shared like trampoline by the members beforehand. Some members stated that it was not direct, and to some people, one member saw it as an advantage to bikers traveling by way of the historic district. Initially, the group was voted four to keep it alive to further discussion, but eventually failed after some lengthy discussions to support it. It is a final route. In the discussion about Prospect Avenue, the argument was identified as a super route for bikes as well as pedestrians, and a disagreement arose as whether or not Prospect Avenue was a bike path as opposed to on the market in the end of Oxford Road or a bike route. We've agreed to disagree, and we moved on from that disagreement. And then took a look at Kingston Road. The committee voted then on the discussion about Kingston Road, which is an alternative free and lead to the P P report. One member mentioned enhancement of the crosswalk at Prospect Avenue, where bikers and walkers could cross there and travel on Kingston Road to avoid the light at the next corner of Stratton, Prospect Avenue. The chapter, the ISOS, in line of sight visibility became a topic for discussion. It was not viewed favorably by some of the committee. One member thought that he would rather ride Kingston even with the curve down there against the avenue. Another member would describe themselves as cyclist, said that he would rather deal with the curve rather than deal with the parked cars on there against the avenue. Another said that the P P report said there against is a viable route and could be, quote, "made safe." Another member noted, another member noted that they continue on there against the avenue from the lane, turn right onto Landing Avenue, rejoin Kingston, thus avoiding the ISOS curve. This notion of having to not gain any support. Another member who supported the Kingston Road group noted that the Chamber of Commerce, along with forty businesses, had signed a petition submitted to the council a while ago, on Kingston Avenue, we're ending the business district. So the business district was seen as an interesting destination or a chance for the bike path. At this point, compared to Kingston Road, we held an advance for discussion in the final vote. Bike path numbers. The discussion then moved on to projected number of users on the bike path. The restated numbers initiated from the state mobility report, the original application of the transitway when they were named bike path. Where numbers ranged from yes, to thousands, and transit counts also in thousands. Strong disagreement occurred at this point in time, where all sides stated that disagree or disagree and move on. One member stated that two, on two consecutive weekends, it was sunny and clear with mild temperatures, even informal count of riders, and then the preferred groups. Or admittedly, a small sample, forty-six riders were noted on Saturday from eleven to two, and one hundred and thirty-nine riders on Sunday also from eleven to two. He found on Saturday, forty-nine mikers, twenty percent of bikers were seasonal bikers, twenty to twenty-five percent were from there against it, many, or many from north and south Kingston. And then traveled down various routes to the Indian, resulting in seventeen riders going down Stratmore, five going down Wanda, six going down Kingston, four on Prospect, two on there against, and twelve other rides. Further statements reported on Sunday, we got one hundred and thirty-nine riders, resulting in thirty-two point four percent going down Kingston, twenty-five point two percent going down there against it, twenty-five point two percent going down Wanda, twenty point one percent going down Stratmore, seven point two percent Prospect, and zero down Hawthorne. Terminately, then stated that it was odd that the consultants hired to do the study based on key definitions on vehicular patterns rather than those of bicycles, cars and trucks and so forth. Also noted was the notion that many bikes, bikeers indicated that it were traveling through restaurants, beach, or other points of interest by various routes. More specific, the report available, town council has that, if you can get it from the town council. Following presentation, several mentioned, not with a bike with bicycles, bikers clearly take different routes based upon destination and purpose. Next was the lawn street proposal. Discussion then moved on to discussion about lawn shooting, led by a member with a circle introduced to the group at ad hoc one. Discussion was led by matching the route down Lawn Street by way of Stratmore to the sewage pump station and down the side of the pond to the Oskie Nest and Boston Lake Road. One member then said Wanda was on the safe route, too many driveways, highly residential. Another member said it was safe, with low traffic and low stress. Another said that vehicles travel at high speeds on Lawn Street to beat the traffic plates on there against it, the two traffic plates there against it. Another member noted that the end of Lawn Street, a biker had the option to travel to the business district. He had walked up, has moved forward as a final consideration. Stratmore Street. Discussion then moved to a discussion about Stratmore Street. One member reminded the committee that 2019 engineers said, elected by RADA DOT by VHB Engineering, found Stratmore Street to be, quote, "unsafe due to improper line of sight." This is a conflict of the P P report, which was not sponsored by RADA DOT. A member then mentioned that preparation for the rebuttal of the meeting board, Kachi Falls Home and Station, had contacted various engineering firms, and the firms replied that they would find in favor of whoever hired them and ready to check. Several people found that in favor. Another member cited that many issues involved with the South County Museum and negative impacts this would have on the purpose and swell being. Stratmore Street was then moved forward as a final consideration. There against got a proposal. Several members supported there against avenue group as a straight line from Kingston, there was not any high risk of area residential area, it was highly endangered by the treat and supported by a viable route plan. One member shared a road design with the committee. Again, the lack of there against avenue consultation on the committee was noted as a loss of parking for businesses. It was noted that the treat called for removal of forty parking spots on the north side of there against Avenue, plus an additional forty spots, plus or minus, after turning left on Caswell and passing the public station in the other side of the pond on the north side and onto the Oskie Nest and Boston Lake Road. At this point, there was some issue of discussion, but House President Wyatt interrogated the answer in a vote. The vote was, a motion was made second in the discussion, and the votes resulted where four of the six voters recommended there against Avenue, one on one, and one Stratmore. So it's a four-one-one vote. The committee then went on to discuss the path at its origin on Oxford Road, and two groups were discussed, was whether the dirt path, owned by the town, the Ethan's building there, or going on the side of the tennis court, ending at the Kingston Road. The tennis court road was described as one of his partial names, and ended at Kingston Road by way of the gate. Ryan then called for a motion. The motion was made. The tennis court road was voted four, and two for the dirt road. Last thing, the chair of the council recommended the town council would get creative parking by the former library to compensate for loss of parking. One discussion was issued, but passed four-one-one, and one being listed. These are recommendations from the ad hoc committee, as I recorded it, and that's all I have for you. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Donna. Appreciate that. I would now turn this over to the members of the general public. We've had two ad hoc meetings, where the public has not been allowed to speak. I would now say this is your turn to let your voice be heard. So, Jim, would you like to run the poll? Mr. Derrick, would you like to listen?
Oh, is there a list, Jim?
No, there is no, I'll check it, but I don't remember the business background. Just to be clear, the community development director, myself, who are on the ad hoc committee, we are non-voting members. We did not part from any of the tally that was taken during the meeting. We did facilitate and to assist the day presentation, but we did not vote on any of the paths.
Okay, does anybody else have anything to say?
No.
Oh, there is a list, okay. Do you want me to... Can I go over there? Yeah. Is it wrong? Okay, Terry Fleming? Terry?
And Dan, would you just be able to pull up the recommended route on the PowerPoint as well, please?
Is that the right one?
Yes.
Yes.
Good evening, Terry Fleming, thirty-eight, but still speaking as a resident, not as a member of the Land Trust. I just, a comment on that list, I don't know, but I would hope that that list of criteria was developed, was some good from the experts in the state going right past. I'm always suspicious of some things that look like, in those kind of issues, can be skew the criteria to get the one they, I don't know that, but I hope that they consulted, the ad hoc committee consulted with the experts in the state will be done this in terms of establishing criteria. I think the recommendation from the committee not being involved, obviously, in the discussions shouldn't be taken with a great deal of weight, but I applaud the people who served on it, and I'm sure they put every effort into it. But since the committee didn't have three of the roads represented, it's very difficult to say that it was, that all the routes were objectively considered and represented by certain people who wanted to speak for or against those routes. So it's just curious that the council set up a committee, but three of the five roads were not, apparently not represented on the committee. I guess, again, I kicked out before, you didn't start, generally, you could have started.
Maybe.
I can do it in my head. I won't...
Okay, that's good.
But as I've said before, I think there against the avenue is not the right, the only thing worse for me to do nothing, and I appreciate council members who publicly said they want to finish this route, because I think you do need to finish the route, and you need to connect it to the existing route that goes north on Boston Lake Road, because I think that's very important. But there against the avenue is not a good route. It's not safe at all. Ms. Pat Jada's got up here and told you how her business was going to be affected. There's other businesses on that street. If you take the parking off of that, and I just can't imagine a family taking their kids down there against the avenue, as busy as that is, and as dangerous as that is on their bicycles, when there's more, when there's safer alternatives. I think Kingston Road and Central Street are also dangerous, but maybe not as much as there against the avenue. So I think you have two safe routes that you can choose from. I think Wanda and Stratmore can both be constructed safely. And I would prefer Stratmore, but I think you can do either one, and I think it's important if you have the money to do anything, you should take the safest route and the most aesthetic route, and personally, I think that's Stratmore. But I would, I would also, but to stay real quick, two other things. You guys know, you make tough decisions, you're not going to please everyone, you're going to alienate probably with the decision. Please don't, and other councils have not, please don't be intimidated by anybody talking about litigation or anything like that. You need to do the right thing and not worry about what the reaction will be. You should objectively assess what's available and make the right decision. So appreciate your time. That's mine, Dan.
Thank you. The next speaker is Aaron Flaherty.
Good evening, my name is Aaron Flaherty. I live at fifty-nine Conshew Way.
Excuse me, Aaron, just for a second. I'm becoming the star of the United...
You gotta say the title first.
Thank you. Good evening, my name is Aaron Flaherty. I live at fifty-nine Conshew Way. As one of the youngest people speaking here tonight, I stand here for my generation and for those who will inherit this town. I recently graduated from Dartmouth College with a degree in economics and environmental science. I've studied the balance between community development and ecological preservation. That balance is exactly what's at stake with the proposed bike path along Stratmore Street and Anhoxie Lane. I oppose this route for two reasons: safety and environmental protection. First, safety. As a young woman who runs and bikes outdoors, I would not feel comfortable exercising alone along Anhoxie Lane. The Due Diligence Report describes this section as a dirt trail surrounded by densely ventilated forested freshwater wetlands. It's remote, it's difficult to monitor. The tragic murder of Lake Canache reminds us of the risk. She was twenty-two years old, a nursing student. She was killed while jogging in a secluded park in February of 2024. No one should have to choose between staying active and staying safe. Second, environmental impact. Lake Canache is a federally recognized conservation area. It's home to endangered species. Installing a bike path through this ecosystem would cause permanent disturbance. Studies show that human activity along bike paths affect wildlife habitats up to four hundred feet away. Construction would also disrupt water flow, increasing runoff, and erosion in an already delicate wetland system. I'm asking the town council to take Wanda, Stratmore, and Anhoxie off the table. Support the alternative routes like Kingston Road and there against Avenue to the right instead. These routes use existing infrastructure, they provide better visibility and safety, they support local businesses, and they completely avoid wetland destruction. Lake Canache and Canache Farms holds layer of history, biodiversity, and meaning. We must preserve it. Once it is paved over, we cannot bring it back. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. The next speaker would be... One of, Rosemary and David Smith, one of his, right? Or all of his?
Yeah. We'll take a phone. Did you get the...
I don't know which slide is yours, but I do have it.
What about this alternate path? Yeah, we, uh, you know, the next...
It's up there. Yeah, um, you can...
There you go.
Go ahead.
All right, David Smith, this is Rosemary Smith, and we live at twenty-four Castle Road in there against it, and we have comments of one of the bike paths, please. First, we want to say the completion of the South County Bike Path is in the state's ten-year transportation improvement program on schedule. This was recently adopted by Rhode Island and approved by the Federal Highway Administration. The project is described as follows. STIP ID 5089, William C. O'Neil South County Bike Path Extension, Phase 4B. Quote, "This project will design and construct the final segment of the William C. O'Neil South County Bike Path to there against Town Beach. The construction of this extension is pending an agreement with an alternative route with the town of there against it. The funding is for three million dollars. The projected phase is 2028, which is within the so-called constraint timeframe." To get a ready agreement from right on, the town needs to propose a direct route to the Town Beach and connect to existing bikeways, including Boston Net Road bike lanes, and the safe routes to the school multi-use path. We want to secure this agreement as quickly as possible, as the money can be redirected by the state or clawed back by the federal government. The second threat is more serious. Among our criteria for this route is to require the few CRMC permits. However, CRMC permitting may be required to accomplish another goal of this plan, and that is to resolve the bicycle and pedestrian safety issues on there against Avenue between Caswell and Beach, Boston Net Road. This situation should be addressed whether or not the bike path is part of the South, this area is part of the South County Bike Path. Our plan calls for constructing a bi-directional, multi-use path on the north side of there against Avenue from the traffic light at Boston Net Road to the one on Caswell Street. This will require the loss of forty-three unlocked parking spaces according to the treat study, but the improvement to safety is well worth it.
Our alternative for completing the South County Bike Path is as follows. Starting at the there against the community center, cross over to the service road by Springfield Tennis Court and the Poching Court. Exit through the Rhode Island Gate and turn left onto a new bi-directional bike lane on the north side of Kingston Road.
Alternatively, use the crossing at Prospect Street to access the safe routes to school path for the middle and high school, and to connect, alter connect to Central Street for a safer route to Bloom Chirsey.
Continue east on Kingston Road and take a left on a new path behind the Native American statue to Stratmore Road. Travel east on Wanda Street on an on-road bi-directional route with minimal signage, existing parking restrictions, speed limit of fifteen miles per hour, and no through motor vehicle traffic. It's made for local access only. This could lead waves and other wayfinding services from suggesting Wanda as a cut-through street. Cross Caswell Street onto there against Avenue to a bi-directional, multi-use path on the north side of there against Avenue, along Lake Canache.
Alternatively, turn right to use the bi-directional lane on there against Avenue, and then cross at the light to access the library and the P M Home place.
When traveling to the beach, exit there against Avenue onto a new path between the lake and the proposed linear park to bicycle parking opposite the South Pavilion Beach. Use the existing crossing on Boston Net Road to cross to the Beach Pavilion, or take the bike way north to Wickford using the recently marked bike lanes on the road shoulders north and south.
We believe this plan meets our criteria of providing safe routes for all, starting and, and or ending at the there against Town Beach, requiring few CRMC permits, resolving a common safety problem in there against Avenue, connecting to established bike routes, and including cultural and commercial destinations. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. and Mrs. Smith. Mr. Smith, I met that one, but I was on the council in 2000, and I met Mr. and Mrs. Smith at the beginning of the bike path, at the train station, at least that meeting was on there. So they, so I just saw a text that the speaker's on work, could have the... Is that awesome?
Believe it's working, but I think that'd be very close to it, like I am now with this.
Oh.
Yours is off right now.
Mine's off now, yeah, but, okay. All right, so, sorry. Oh, they need to speak, the people need to speak, plus up to the mic. Yeah, okay. All right, so the next speaker would be Brian Lushaw.
Thank you. Good evening. The town of there against it to honor its commitments to Mr. Joseph Formacola and subsequently the Canache Farms Homestead Association. Stratmore Street should never have been considered for the bike path due to longstanding agreements that were made when the Canache Farm Development was being built. When there against it took roughly a hundred and seventy-two acres referred to as the park, now known as Canache Farm by unit domain, the town had no access to the land from any useful roadway other than Anhoxie Lane. At the time, the town of there against it had well-documented safety concerns about cars accessing Canache Farms from Boston Net Road and Anhoxie. The town of there against it wanted another access point to their land, and it got one when Mr. Formacola donated a portion of his own land to create an entrance from his road, which was later also named Stratmore Street, an act of good faith that is now serves as the primary access point to the South County Museum. As part of this land donation, Mr. Formacola permitted road access under specific conditions, and returned the town agree that these roads would not be used as cut-throughs to the beach or for beach parking. They're for pedestrian and vehicle use only, never for a bike path. The understanding was clear. The roads would be public, allow for public access, they would not be public roads. And in fact, this position was reaffirmed on May fifteenth, nineteen ninety-five, when the there against the town council voted four to one that this section of roadway, Stratmore Street, is not a public road. Again, this is the same... Again, this is the section of Strathmore Street that's in Canache Farms, not from, uh, Kingston Road to Otmar, which has been public since nineteen seventy-eight, it was built in nineteen thirty. This is within development. These agreements reside in the town clerk's office, and I strongly encourage the town council, the town solicitor, to review these documents. I'd also like to ask Church Fleming, the former Narragansett Planning Board member who spoke last time and spoke today, and Rupert Friday, the current planning board member. These are two individuals who are strong advocates for the Strathmore route. I'd like them to review these documents. In fact, Mr. Fleming will see his name on many of these historical documents of, of things that were agreed to with regard to Strathmore's usage. So let's be clear. The town of Narragansett would have no access to the South County Museum through Strathmore Street today if it weren't for Mr. Formacola's language which was made only after certain assurances and agreements were in place regarding the future of his road. So tonight I ask you to do what is right. Under the town's agreements, preserve the integrity of our local planning process and remove Strathmore Street to Canache Farms from any further consideration of a bike path or a spur. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Scott Feeder. I'm sorry. Scott.
Hi, thank you. Uh, my name is Scott, and I live on Wanda. Um, brand new to town, and so learning that a bike path might go through our neighborhood. Interesting to, to learn that after the purchase. Um, but let's put that aside for a second, and I think I, my, my point is to ask the council, are we in a position right now where we are looking at a faulty premise? The faulty premise, I would say, might be that is because there's three million dollars available, are we improving the town? Does the bike path improve Narragansett? I'm not here long enough to answer the question. I'm here to ask the question. Are we working through a faulty premise? That the existence of this money says that somehow, whether you choose Wanda, Narragansett, Strathmore, or any of the choices, what is the improvement? I did sit through the committee meeting, um, and I heard some, some arguments as to what this would do for the town. I've heard that the argument could be, um, an economic boom for the town. Personally, I would go to Monahans every day. How much longer can that line be? In the summer? It can't be any longer. It wouldn't matter how many more bikers or car drivers you put into that, that line's going to be the same. Wherever line needs to get longer, probably got to Rainy Day. It's not gonna be any bikers coming out of Rainy Day. Cool Beans is going out of business. That line, you can wait for half an hour to get a cup of coffee. I'm not here long enough to know what the economic boom would be to stretch a bike path from that dot to that dot. I also heard that, don't worry about the fifty, sixty, seventy, or eighty parking spots because the bikers will come and they won't need parking spots. I've yet to see a biker drag four kids, chairs, a cooler, on their bike. You'll need every spot you have, and you know you already need more. If you pull Wanda, I guess I have to speak for Wanda for a moment. If you pull Wanda, I believe you'd be eliminating all parking on Wanda. I'm having a hard time seeing how you wouldn't. If you have no parking on Wanda, you have no parking on the block of Narragansett, and my friend comes over to visit me, I only have two spots. If I no longer can park my Wanda myself, pull my car off so they can use one of my spots, where does my friend park? It's a minimalist issue. The bigger issue is, are we working on a faulty premise? The last piece I'll say in my ten seconds. When this all started twenty-plus years ago, there were no electric bikes. I watched out of my road of about fifty bikes going by, I'd say half of them are electric bikes. Not one of those electric bikes is staying on your path, and that'll wear you to death. Just some things to think about. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Arlene McLeir? Hi.
Hi, Arlene McLeir, I live on Wanda Street. I addressed the council when you had your last work session. And I'll stress again how busy Wanda Street is. In the summertime, we have the pedestrians who walk to the beach, the little children walking down the street, the parents with their totes, with their, um, different surfboards and things like that. We have a tremendous amount of bikers who do come down that road right now. Our street is very narrow. There are lots of driveways on our street. If you, I have some questions. It's never been addressed. When you talked about Kingston Road, when you talked about Strathmore, there was a beautiful presentation of what was going to be done. But bike lanes, no parking, this. Nothing has ever been said about Wanda. Do we lose parking spaces? Which means that people can't have their friends come in the summertime to visit them because there's no place to park? Does it mean that you're going to change the structure of the road? Are you going to have lanes going down the road with parks for bicycles? Are they only going to be on one side of the street, or is it going to be on both sides of the street? The other question is, you talked about cutting, or the last person talked about changing the speed limit to fifteen miles an hour. Some people on bikes go faster than that, especially e-bikes. We have children right now who ride scooters down that street. I saw one the other day, had to be under ten years old. No helmet on his head, and he flew down the street. I think you're looking for issues, accidents to happen if you allow that to go down the street that is so narrow that there are spots where you can't see people coming out of their driveway. It's not a safe place to have a bike path. Where do they go at the end of the street? When you get to the end of the street at Narragansett Ave, try to cross there in the summertime to get across, to walk down to the beach on a sidewalk. It's impossible. You have to wait until a nice person will stop and let you cross the street. Are the bikes going to go on the street? Are they going onto the sidewalk next to the pond? So then people have nowhere to walk to the beach? There's so many unanswered questions about putting a bike path on Narragansett, Wanda Street that have never been answered. Years ago, there were some, there were some drawings many years ago that were little sketches about what possibly would happen. Is that what's going to happen? We don't know. We're looking at this blindly. We don't have the answers. We don't know how it's going to affect our homes. So please think about that. Thank you.
Uh, Chris, Christopher Fitzinsins.
Good evening. My name is Chris Fitzinsins. I grew up in Canache Farms and lived there the majority of my life. My uncle Joe Formacola cannot be here tonight and has been to read a statement on his behalf. Statement reads as follows. "The development of Canache Farms has a long, challenging, and at times contentious history. Took over seven years from initial planning to final approval with a pre-application conference in nineteen ninety-three, final approval in nineteen eighty-nine, and the status of Step Strathmore Street getting clarified in two thousand." "The sixty-acre property was originally purchased in the early nineteen nineties by a Boston-based development company in which I held equity. Following the passing of the managing member, I acquired one hundred percent ownership of the project. This parcel was and remains exceptionally unique for Narragansett. It offers a rare combination of walking distance to the Town Beach and an intense feeling of living in a rural community while providing proximity to the center of our town. Early in the process, a former town planner presented a design to me that featured streets similar to those found in Providence or other urban areas. I rejected that plan specifically because it proposed a direct public straight roadway to the museum. I believe that concept would have compromised the character of the neighborhood, and unfortunately, that disagreement sparked the beginning of many contentious meetings. At one point, the same planner asked me, 'What would be the potential value of the homes?' I told him the sales price would be in excess of four hundred thousand dollars. He replied, 'No way you'll ever get more than two hundred and seventy-five thousand.' I explained that he didn't understand the potential fair market value, and I always believed that my refusal to accept his road design and my disagreement with his pricing assumptions contributed to further tension. From the start, I viewed this sixty-acre property as a special gem that needed to be developed with great respect for the environment, its historical significance, and protection of future homeowners. The Narragansett school system was rapidly growing at the time of this application, and the financial impact on our schools was taken into consideration. Canache Farms would contribute significant tax revenue while adding very few students to the Narragansett school system. In that sense, it was a win-win for the town. Over the years, I redesigned the road system more than half a dozen times to protect wetlands and to preserve mature tree growth as much as possible. I'll never forget the large oak tree at the corner on Talia Court mandating that I change the road layout strictly to preserve this mature, impressive tree. The road was to allow traffic to go around the tree rather than through it. Access to the museum was another source of controversy. During one meeting, which is on record, I told the planning board that no public highway would ever go through this property as long as I owned it, and that I would rather just build a single home in the middle of the sixty acres if necessary to prevent it. Fortunately, calmer heads prevailed in future meetings, and I agreed that emergency ingressing aggression should be permitted along with access for museum-related functions, a fair compromise that protected the neighborhood while serving the community's needs." Uh, I'm wrapping up here in a few seconds if that's all right. "My goal throughout was to ensure protection for future homeowners, of whom my recently deceased sister's family is one of thirty-one. My intention was to build there for myself, and I kept what I considered to be the most desirable lot to further emphasize that I wanted to be a part of this special, somewhat private seaside community. I named two of the streets after my late brother's daughters, Talia Court and Sidney Lane. I'm extremely proud of the development and strongly oppose any effort to alter the final agreement that was reached after so many years of discussion and compromise. Such changes could devalue the homes and potentially lead to litigation. As a licensed real estate broker and taxpayer in Narragansett for over fifty years, I respectfully ask that you do not destroy the integrity of this very unique seaside development. We should all be proud that Canache Farms is a part of our community. Thank you, council members, for your consideration in this matter."
Okay, um, so the next one is, uh, Joseph Fitzinsins.
Hi.
Oh.
Yes.
Oh, he did, okay. Very, so, that was just the case.
I do.
All right. Uncle Joe didn't sign it properly. All right. Uh, Denise Mancy?
Hi.
Hi, good evening. My name is Denise Mancy. I reside at forty-nine Canache Way. I would actually like to address a comment by a former town council member that was made here on the night of October sixth. They said, "If you read studies about bike paths, what you learn is actually property values as a general rule increased over time." This person made the statement without any reference to any specific documentation that includes data regarding a bike path passing through a residential development. I would like to share some information with you that could dispel that statement. I agree with what was said earlier this evening by Ms. Flaherty. Anhoxie Lane is very much so a secluded and dark road. But that and my property borders Anhoxie Lane and the West Lot. And may I add, I see everything that goes on back there all hours of the night. Over the years, there have been a multitude of unwelcome trespassers cutting through our yard as well as those of our abutting neighbors. Most times, it is people cutting through because they cannot find parking for beach, so they decide to park in our neighborhood and walk through our yards. They walk through with chairs, coolers, and wagons. When I have approached them, they have most frequently become agitated and offer some excuse about parking. In addition to these beachgoers, I have had people jog through my yard. I have had kids riding e-bikes across my front lawn, through my backyard, and continuing through the West Lot. One time, an intoxicated woman was walking through my yard looking for the South County Museum. There was even an evening last summer in two thousand and twenty-four when some individuals attempted to gain access to my neighbor's home. From my security cameras, I could see they entered and exited the property from Anhoxie Lane. If the bike path were to include Anhoxie Lane, these types of incidents unfortunately could increase. For these reasons, I highly doubt a bike path through our neighborhood is going to increase our property values as with state. Thank you for your time."
Thank you. Um, so, Mike DeLuca?
Good evening, council members. Um, Mike DeLuca, I live at twenty-one Middle Bridge Road. I just know my phone's you got here, Dan. Um, what, uh, what I'd like to do with my three minutes is, uh, give you a little bit of history of the bike path and, um, so to give you context. Some of you may or may not know the full history of it. And then, um, I'm trying to make a couple of points. Um, this, this bike path was conceived in the nineteen eighties.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't put on the mic, I didn't.
Oh, okay, well, I'm gonna start all over.
Up to you.
Um, it was conceived in the nineteen eighties. A feasibility study was done by DOT in nineteen eighty-four to, uh, consider whether or not the bike path could generate enough traffic for, uh, for the, the former railroad line could generate enough traffic to be a bike path. I know that because I did the feasibility study. I was the bicycle, bicycle planner for Ride On from nineteen eighty-four to nineteen eighty-six. Um, so my involvement has been half my lifetime. Um, we did conclude, DOT did conclude that it would generate enough bicycle traffic because of the many neighborhoods and commercial centers that connect to it and that it connects to, that it connects, excuse me. Uh, those are the key things that you, you should be taking bike paths through, um, major, uh, locations and bringing you from one destination to another. Right now, what we have is a bike path that ends at the community center, which could be considered the destination, but it's not the original destination. Um, as, uh, I believe it was, uh, the Smiths mentioned, uh, the terminus as specified in the tip and right from the beginning was intended to be the Town Beach because it is the highest traffic generator, uh, in this part of the town. Um, and it was just a natural, uh, proposed area. So, the first thing I'd like to say about that is that any alternatives that you're considering that do not terminate at the beach or at the red light in front of the beach, be eliminated. Uh, now knowing that DOT has made the commitment to and fulfilled their commitment to, uh, for a designation of bike lanes on Boston Net Road, it is important and imperative, I believe, that you connect this bike path to those bike lanes. You will then be able to ride your bicycle from Kingston Station to Wickford on, on, uh, these two facilities as they would be connected. I'm aware, uh, and observing, I haven't come to any meetings, but I know that you've been taking a lot of commentary, and it seems as though we've been neighborhoods pitted against one another. And that, that's really kind of sad in a way uh, because bicycles, as you know, are, are vehicles. They have the right to be on any road. Uh, so, it's important that we find the best route, the most direct route if possible, the one that connects these two facilities. Uh, and the one, most importantly, that Ride On will find. If you provide or you commit to a, a route- If you provide or you commit to a route, now I've got, I've got one last second. Uh, if you commit to a route that is too circuitous, does not bring you to the beach, or at least to the red light in front of the beach, it's very possible that the ride out will not find it. Because they are in the business of building transportation facilities, not railgun facilities. So please keep all those things in mind. I, um, I do hope we can come up with a route that is satisfactory. Thank you.
My name is Jody Nakamark. I reside at fifty-three Stratmore Street. I agree very much with what Ann had stated earlier, or Speaker Seaman. I have concerns related to safety. We have a retention pond at the beginning, at the beginning of our subdivision, and I believe that that pond could potentially become a nuisance and/or a safety hazard as it does have water and something nefarious would happen. We have also the museum property in our neighborhood, and I believe that also poses a safety issue being that it is somewhat insulated and it's a hidden path. I don't think healthy things happen on hidden spaces. They also have animals to be concerned about that are in that area and beautiful old buildings that could potentially be harmed by someone who's maybe not with just riding a bicycle through this path in less contentious. I do not have anything against bicycle riders, as well as trying to fight, but I believe there are multiple ways you can attack this. Um, I also believe going through the Anhoxie area, they're going to come up with some environmental issues. I know that the impossible drainage situations in our town that we need to abide by as neighbors, so I imagine the bike path would also have to be respectful of those rules. I also think we have a wonderful town here, and I think it would be wonderful if we, as a community, could support our businesses in the here and to direct that traffic to the here so that businesses aren't closing or having a struggle. That would be a very positive outcome as well. I know that you speak about the loss of parking spaces, which I guess I'm a little unsure I understand, but my thought is, why wouldn't you want people to pay for parking in our work, in our beach parking lots? It helps to support the beach and the community. If you're a resident, you can get a sticker or you can pay for the parking. I believe the bike path or our town council should represent us as your residents more than worrying about out in town. And I don't mean to be cold because I know they also bring in business and revenue, but I think that us as residents of Narragansett should be a priority. I do believe that we can support a non-residential path that does meet the outcome that you're looking for, and it would be very beneficial to all of us in town. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Is that me? Could've been a state.
Yeah.
Yeah. Last part of thinking is that Marusa in the house. All right, so, um, I don't have anything to speak, but I'm just trying to wrap my head around this. I think Narragansett Avenue and Kingston Road are just not options. Um, too dangerous. Uh, I see people riding their bikes down, especially Kingston, um, in Narragansett, and it's just, it's really rolling the dice. It's very dangerous. What I'm trying to understand is this opposition for a bicycle to go down a public road. Uh, these are not like private roads. I believe they get geared for by the town of Narragansett. Uh, I think they get plowed by the town of Narragansett, so I'm trying to understand why they don't want people to ride their bikes down. Uh, my road is a fairly busy road, actually, in North Bay because a lot of people come through from Medituxet. And I would, I can't even come up with a number, but all day long, I have walkers going by my house, we have people on bicycles, we have some e-bikes, we've got everything. I, it's a rare thing that I don't see something going by my house constantly. Um, and it's a safe place to ride. We have driveways and everything, but when I back up, I'm very mindful, first of all, but I always think of walkers and I'm always looking out for bicycles. And we have kids in our neighborhood, too, and somehow this just works. I don't consider my road to be like, I don't want a bicycle going down it. Um, and I don't think thousands will be in anyone's spot at one time, and I think the goal is to get to the beach. And I think allowances can be made. Um, we can't let this money slip through the town's fingers. Um, and we are part of its state funding. We are residents of this town, but we are residents of the state of Rhode Island. And I'm so elated that the, um, one A is one now for bicycles because the more people that get out and use a bike and safely use a bike, the better it is for our environment. And, uh, I've driven down both of the streets that people don't want bikes on, and I drive slowly because they are residential areas, but I just, I can't, I just don't understand that because they are public roads, and I, I think the council really can't let this money slip away, and I hope it's not for Kingston or Narragansett Avenue. I think it's much too dangerous. So, thanks.
Thank you. Next speaker is, uh, Tara Flaherty. Pardon, no, I'm sorry, Tara. Deb Copac.
My name is Deb Copac. I live on Point Judith Road. I'm here tonight for several reasons.
Oh, sorry. Thanks, everybody.
I'll give it a couple of seconds. Um, first, I believe that completing the bike path is important. When the original plan was created, the endpoint of this bike path was identified as Narragansett Town Beach, and I believe it should remain that way, out near the beach, not where it is today and not along the seawall. The reason for the endpoint wasn't because of the beach, it was because the terminus of the path would then be connected to bike lanes north into Whitford. Second, my decision to request consideration of the fourth route did not meet, um, that requirement, and more importantly, the alternatives were not safer for families, for children, and casual bike and bicyclists. Also, none of the other options, including the fifth version, were particularly seen in. While this proposal, um, my proposal, was intended for rider safety, especially for families, it would also provide a scenic route for the last and shortest leg of a beautiful ride or walk. I also realized that the end, at the end of the ride, uh, kiosk can be established in the corner of the parking lot with information about outdoor recreational activities in Narragansett, including walking paths, other places to explore, amplifying the activities at the South County Museum, and also perhaps include a pamphlet that riders could take to provide information about all of our businesses in town. I'm skeptical about claims that bicyclists will destroy property, do harm to the animals at the museum, or get in accidents at a left turn toward the museum. During various events at the museum, dozens of cars went down the same street, and I'm unaware of any vehicular or pedestrian accidents occurring. I was unable to find any statistical data about crime on bikes, uh, on bike paths, but in my search, I came upon this article by Perry Corporation, the same group that worked on our study with Dupree, and the same folks in the end, uh, wrote that this option was the best choice for the safety of riders. And I quote, "In nineteen eighty-two, Perry Corporation was hired by Ride On to study the feasibility of developing the fourteen point five mile eastbound bike path from Providence to Bristol. During the planning stages, the path was met with significant resistance from residents who were fearful of increased climate vandalism, in addition to skepticism for taxpayer money being used on something that they thought would only be used by a small number of people. In spite of the pushback, the bike path was approved, and with a year of opening, public sentiment and about-face as butters to the path requested permission to install gates on the progress for direct access. The bike path became a symbol of local community and state pride, attracting people from throughout the region to enjoy the scenic views and adjacent, the adjacent communities." Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, now Tara Flaherty?
Good evening. I'm Tara Flaherty, and I reside at fifty-nine Canachet Way for over twenty years. Tonight, I would like to bring your attention to an independent two thousand and nineteen project readiness report ordered by the Rhode Island Department of Transportation. It was determined that Stratmore Street has some overriding safety concerns and that the geometric alignment of Stratmore Street does not provide adequate staffing sites, site distances for bikes. Stratmore Street should have never been back on the table, yet on June third, two thousand and twenty-four, former town councilman Deb Copac, with a degree in history, not engineering, thought Stratmore Street would be a more enjoyable route. With Copac leading the charge, good taxpayer money was expended on nothing other than buying an opinion. But the fact is that Stratmore Street should have never been on the table. The Canachet Farms subdivision was granted zoning approval that intentionally mitigated problems unlimited access to Stratmore Street would bring. Bike path use was specifically addressed and preventative measures were implemented. Something interesting you'll note here tonight is that the ad hoc committee has a new secretary as Rupert Friday refused to deliver to you tonight a summary of the ad hoc committee's majority consensus supporting Narragansett Avenue. It's pathetic that the eagerly appointed secretary Rupert Friday refused to honor the position because he was upset that he was the sole vote for Stratmore. Rupert Friday has been quoted as saying that bike paths have an economic impact, but his stance steadfast is promoting Stratmore Street, which bypasses all the businesses. Did he miss it when a local businessman presented a petition signed by forty-some peer businesses stating they wanted a bike path to their businesses? And let's address Rupert Friday's four-page survey. Please, this is just his opinion dressed up like research. There is no methodological rigor or legitimate data to support any of it. I would also like to address the hundred thousand bike path users, as this number was used in the project application and multiple press releases. Rupert Friday downplayed this number. Excuse me, Rupert, federal funding was applied for using this number. Data provided in grant applications is used to evaluate a project's merit, impact, and cost effectiveness. Omitting known inflated numbers suggests intent to mislead, raising questions of ethical violations. In addition, please elect to avoid Wanda. It's narrow and unsafe. So what do I support? I back a route that serves a purpose, prioritizes our community, our children, our businesses. It should support a function. I support Kingston Road or Narragansett Avenue to the right. Narragansett to Caswell to Kingston or Kingston. Submitting documents for the record. Thank you.
Uh, next speaker is, uh, Anne Newquist.
I'm Anne Newquist, forty-six Canachet Way. I am pleased with the final four-two vote by the ad hoc committee selecting Narragansett Avenue as preferred route for the bike path extension. There's no doubt in my mind this route will best serve the interests of Narragansett businesses and visitors, as well as cause the least disruption to Narragansett residents. This route is also known as alternative one in the two thousand and twenty-four Dupree Bar Engineering Board. In their words, "It is a more direct path, running only thirty-one hundred linear feet, has fewer conflict points, and ends at the shoreline." Indeed, Mr. Friday's survey data substantiates the popularity of this kind of direct route to the shoreline, as nearly sixty percent of riders on October fifth used either Kingston Road or Narragansett Avenue. The real challenge of this route is the lost parking along the north side of Narragansett Avenue, as Perry recommends a bidirectional bike path in its place. At first blush, this sounds insurmountable, but is important to focus on the estimated parking deficit of thirty-two spaces, not the total parking spaces lost. I would contend that the town can find thirty-two parking spaces. As a beach town manager explained in a recent meeting, non-resident parking is now offered in the South Lot after one P M. on weekends. As well, the new, the new library parking is nearly empty on weekends. I have photos that I can submit if I'm allowed to do that. And as you all know, one of the stated objectives of this bike path is to decrease the need for art or auto parking in this very congested area. I urge the town council to be creative on ways to solve the summer beach parking challenge. I also urge the town council to heed the call of forty-one businesses who signed a petition that they want a bike path going to or near the pier area as they believe it will boost economic activity. You heard testimony in the first work session to the same effect, bike paths add value to businesses. This concept is also consistent with the two thousand and seventeen Narragansett Comprehensive Plan Policy ED two point two, which has a goal to develop circulation systems that optimize access to local commerce, and more specifically states to increase bicycle signage, lanes, and share lane markings for bikes in the town's commercial areas. I hope that the town council will accept the recommendation of this committee and vote for Narragansett Avenue. Thank you for your time and service.
Uh, the last speaker, uh, that signed up is Mary Massa. Is Mary here? Is that Mary? We'll let everybody speak that wants to speak, uh, but Mary's on this list, so if she comes back, um, is there anybody else that isn't on the list that would like to speak? That, that, go ahead, sir. Hi.
Chris Slade. I'm a, um, Wakefield resident actually and member of the ad hoc committee. I don't think it's a secret, but I prefer to ride my bike for transportation, for recreation, for exercise. I've used a bike path nearly every day for over a decade. First, I think it's unconscionable for this council to do nothing. I hear people saying that it's not a problem. I am going to tell you, there is a big problem. It is dangerous for people to get from the end of the bike path to the beach. I said this at the committee meeting, but I'll say again, I have ridden my bike ten thousand miles all over the country. In other countries, I have been hit by a car two times that I can remember. Both of those were getting the end of the bike path and the beach. Both of those were in the last couple of years, and if any of these routes under consideration would completely eliminate the conflict points that caused those crashes. So in a sense, this is personal for me, but another one, this isn't about me. I think my experience is representative of, uh, the trend in this country. Deaths and serious injuries for vulnerable road users, pedestrians and cyclists are up substantially over the last few years in this country, where they're going down in all the other countries around the world. And it is on councils like yours to make little improvement improvements on their streets. And it is on councils like yours to make little improvement improvements on their streets like it was before you did that. It's not just a safety issue, it's an equity issue. What you won't hear from today are kids, teenagers, that don't drive cars, chores that are coming here, maybe don't want to rent a car. Useful fact is forty percent of eighteen-year-olds in this country right now do not have the driver's licenses. People are changing to drive less. E-bikes are up in popularity. It's providing access building to people who don't, you know, might not be athletic. I think it's a good idea to anticipate that use and creating safe route for them that are vehicles entitled to the road. Um, with regards to the specific routes, I don't think you should listen to me. I don't think you should listen to anyone else here, to be frank. I think you should listen to the engineer, who is trained in this, and who paid to do the study. He recommended Narragansett Ave as his recommended route. It is the only one where bikes and cars are completely separated, with a barrier that can be protected for the entire length from the bike path to the beach. It is the safest route, in their opinion, the safest route, in my opinion. There is no conflict between bikes and cars the whole way, safe for, like, water street and driveways. Every other route would have bikes and cars competing for space, and at least some of the route is the most rest. I think it's the obvious choice. The only reason not to do it would be the removal of parking spaces. I won't go into reasons to do that, but I don't think it's a concern. And if you don't want to hit those parking spaces, water street is a final narrative. It is low stress, easy to bike down, despite how I've heard some people have tried it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public? This is Friday.
Hi. My name is Susan Orbin, one thirteen Montauk Road. When I was fifteen, I was in a bicycle accident, and I landed in the hospital for a week. When I was twenty, my college roommate died instantly when she was hit head-on by a van in a state park on her bicycle. Needless to say, I was not keen on riding a bicycle ever again, but then I married an avid bicyclist and moved to a neighborhood where I was adjacent to a bike trail. I first began running and then started riding on a bike trail. I only ride on bike trails. I was thrilled when we moved to Narragansett and close, not very far, from the South County Bike Trail, and I began running and then eventually riding with my family on the South County Bike Trail. It's the only bike trail that I ride in, in Rhode Island. I've never been afraid or seen anything nefarious or dangerous going on on the bike trail. People who use bike trails, and the South County Bike Trail in particular, look like men. So they're meeting a typical bike trail user, an exclusive bike trail user, adhering that perspective. They are people with young children on bikes, um, in carriers, pushing strollers, kids on, with bikes themselves, and they're to say, look, people, um, in wheelchairs with their caregivers, they are elderly people with walkers, um, they're runners, they're U R I students. We are not nefarious. I've never heard of anyone being attacked on the bike trail, and if you ride the bike trail, there are many areas on the trail that are isolated and environmentally protected as an extension of the Great Swamp, and that's what makes the path such an incredible gem. And connecting it from the Kingston Railroad Station to the beach will be absolutely phenomenal. It runs by farms where you hear roosters. It runs by properties with goats that occasionally get out onto the path. There are views of turtles and dragonflies near the swamp, as well as parks and playgrounds and town centers in Peaceville and Wakefield. And you can ride the path and get an ice cream cone at Ripley's in Wakefield, or brunch at the Bluebird Cafe. But right now, you can't go anywhere in Narragansett but the senior center, which really isn't a draw. And in fact, I rarely ride the path into Narragansett because there's nothing there to go to. The completing the path to me is a no-go bringer, and the Strathmore path is the best and safest path. It will create, it will connect the path to the town's two greatest gems, the beach and Canachet Farm. And, uh, it just seems like something that our town really needs to do. The fears that have been mentioned over and over again are unfounded. If we drove our cars down Strathmore Avenue, would people still be afraid? The bicycle path is not lit, so usually it's only used in daylight hours, in good weather. Um, and so I
I'm gonna ask you to finish off.
I think the spirit of the bike path connecting so many of South County's gems and put the interests, the long-term interests of the town first. Thank you.
Thank you. Don.
Thank you. I'm not speaking in the room of the ad hoc committee, but I'm talking myself. Just to bring out the last speaker, um, the bike paths, we're one of the bike paths that one of the safest ones ever out of Rhode Island. But we bring your attention to September six year, when Principal Wilson at the elementary school, she fought on the word about an individual trying to pick up a couple of girls at the end of the bike path, but didn't want to sign. That's documented, that's on record, we have that copied. So as far, that didn't happen very often, but nonetheless, it did happen. I do want to draw your attention to a couple of things. The, uh, the concept of to the beach, uh, we've, we've beat this up many, many times now, and we did call DOT, and DOT says anyone in anywhere in the general area is to fight to the beach. As far as the number of people who might act like that, I have it way up to sixty-five thousand, but again, you all know what that is, you all have that, all members of the ad hoc committee have that. It's a significant number, and whether it has any creeps or not, it's up to you folks to decide. I do know, one of the managers sitting in the back of the room, I had the opportunity to, uh, see Mike, Rupert, and Terry chatting back there. It's a tremendous amount of great power, tremendous amount of great power, and great service they've done to the town, and I don't want to appreciate the work that they've done. But I do want to draw your attention to, not one of the proponents who's sitting this long time getting behind me, live on both bike routes. And I can remember the day, back in two thousand and fifteen and nineteen, Patrick Murray, sitting there, one of you, he said, okay, who wants the bike path? Then, and he raised a hand, and he said, that's it, over and done with. Should you remember that? Okay?
I've heard the story.
Okay. Well, I'm gonna retell you the story, that's exactly what happened. We need to consider the people who want to live in this environment, contribute, and Canachet Farms pays a significant amount of taxes with almost no token involved in school funding. That's another big factor. So think about someone's name, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you. So, um, tell Rupert.
Good evening, council members. Rupert Friday, one thirteen Montauk Road, and I'm speaking as a resident. As you know, I'm a retired professional planner with expertise in both transportation planning and park planning. I use the bicycle bike path pretty often, or even some of us. When we first moved here, I spent a fair amount of time at the South County Museum. It's a hidden gem. I suggest that the town complete the bike path with the route that is in best interest of the town, makes the town most welcoming, is comfortable for families with children to use, and attractive, and consistent with the character of the rest of the trail. In my experience, proposals for bike paths always bring out the nimbies. For some reason, bike paths evoke fear about those people who will use the path, and the damage and the problems they will cause. If we were left to the nimbies, no one would ever build a bike path. Once built, those fears do not materialize. If well-designed and well-located, bike paths become a community asset, a point of pride. They make the town welcoming, enhance economic activity for restaurants, hotels, and venues. If our neighbors who fear the bike path spend an hour during busiest time of the year walking or riding the busiest section of the bike path, they would see who's using it. Couples, families, senior citizens. I believe they would see that there's not a reason to fear the bike path users, nor the number of users. There's been a lot of misinformation, inaccurate statements, distorted statements of online reports being made by the path proposals. Here are the facts. The town owns Sprague Park. Its town owns Canachet Farm. It was acquired in nineteen seventy-four with state and federal funding, and it's the largest park property the town owns. Primary access to the town's Canachet Farm parkland is Strathmore Street, the town-owned street. Canachet Farm's parkland adds significant value to Strathmore Street properties. The lease to South County Museum was initiated in nineteen eighty-five. The lease explicitly states, "Public use of Canachet Farm property, including but not limited to existing and future hiking trails and bike paths, is a priority for the town in Narragansett." After spending days studying the proposed routes and reading the consult reports, I found the consult reports were lacking, and they never interviewed the bike path users, and they never did count the bicycling users, where the bikes went. So I did that, did that on a Saturday and Sunday in early October, in beautiful weather. And my reports with you, um, so, um, the route, the, uh, most prominent path users that I interviewed, said the route that was most important to them was away from cars, away from traffic, and that's, that's the path that most users would use. And if you look at where the path that the users are using, from the end of the bike path, it goes
I'd let everybody speak a little bit over, so it's just
It goes through, through, uh, through the park, through Sprague Park. And a lot of folks go down Strathmore Street to Anoxie Lane, and I think that's the best of the road trail. Thank you.
Does anybody else, uh, have anything to say? I assume the attorneys, the speaker, or not? So I guess we'll just, um, what's that, Joe?
Um, my name is Joseph Hiccinus, and I'm tired of court. My son was here earlier presenting a letter from Zolbuda Gulliam, Canachet Farms. And my work is involved with that. I just want to reiterate that he made a lot of agreements with the town to build this park, that development, and the stipulations were, if he never gave you the two acres at the end of Strathmore, you would never have access to the museum. And then those stipulations are on the record, and you all know about those records. And also Rupert Friday says, Anoxie, do we really know how much it's gonna cost to put a road in there, the drainage? Of course, you have to go to D E M., you're gonna have to go to C C R M, M R I., and all that, and you're not gonna have enough money. I mean, I, I've been in construction over thirty-five years. I worked for the DOT for ten years, I worked for Amtrak for twenty-five years, and prior to that, I did ten years of design. And it's gonna cost a lot more than three million to do the road, Mr. Friday, as you spoke him. Just to go down Anoxie, you know? And that's if you get the permits. You know how much it took Joe to get the permits to go because of the weapons fought at Canachet Farms? He went through a lot, a lot of hoops to get that done, changing roads, keeping away from the weapons and everything. And I just want to reiterate that statement.
Thank you. Okay, so that's, that's it, right? And then, um, so, um, I think that, um, if a council member has anything to say, feel free to, uh, to say it. But in listening to, uh, this evening's, uh, presentation, listening to all of these presentations, I have a couple of questions myself that, um, I think should be answered by our staff or our solicitor prior to the next time we meet. And, um, if you, if you agree, um, I, I, you know, there's a lot of talk about if the roads are private, public, in the Canachet, uh, development. Um, I think it'd be nice to hear an opinion on that. I'm not leaning any way, I just would like to know that, actually, I think the town should know that. Um, and if there's any zoning issues there with zoning boards that, you know, said yes or no to different things. I wonder if the recreation has made plans if the park does go. I did see a, uh, I did see a, uh, a rendering of a kiosk in the West Parklot. Um, do they plan on removing parking, uh, spaces in the West Parklot to accommodate, um, the path? So they might not have even made those plans yet, but, um, so I don't know the answer to that. Another, um, another question I think that comes up a lot is, um, is it true that the, uh, that the bike path through the DOT's, uh, decision to let us borrow the money or give us the money, the grant money, is it, uh, definitely, uh, does it definitely have to end at the beach? Or was it the ocean? Or was it the pier? That would be nice to clear that up. The number of people that use the path, I think that's like all over the place. Um, I, I can't imagine some of the numbers I've heard, but, you know, I guess that's all possible. And is the deadline to vote or lose the dollars definitely December thirty-first? Those are the questions I've come up with in my head that, you know, I don't, you know, I don't know if you have a clear answer to. And I think if you guys have any other questions, maybe it's a good time, because I'm gonna ask when we have our next meeting, and we're running out of time, if one of these answers is correct.
I'm definitely with you there, Jim. I am going to be adding an agenda item for either the next meeting, or more likely the December first, uh, meeting, um, for further discussion of this when we have a full council, um, so that Alex can weigh in as well. But to my understanding, it's end of year. Certainly we can get clarity on that, but I would like to make a decision sooner than later, such that we don't lose out on this funding. This is three million dollars worth of grant money that I, I think will only be a benefit to the town. So I, I think we need to action on this a little sooner than later. But yeah, we definitely get those answers, uh, questions answered for the, uh, we do, or discuss this again with the council.
I would just like to say, um, sitting through the ad hoc committee, um, meetings, I would like to thank everyone who was on the committee and your professionalism in, in addressing all the issues that came up and the great discussions that did happen. Um, so I want to thank you for that. I'd also like to thank the residents for coming out and expressing how you feel about the bike path. I know, um, I personally think it's important that the bike path be completed. Um, I appreciate all your input. Um, I'm gonna have to digest everything that was said, and, um, look forward to the next meeting, so thank you.